Welcome to the 5:30 PM, February 28, 2023, Presentation City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And would you please join me for the pledge?
My blessed ladies and citizens, who's a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great kingdom of justice and law.
Uh, City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions or requests from the public present. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much. City Manager, special recognitions.
Yeah, yes, sir. The first is a employee recognition for the month of February 2023. I'd like to recognize Bobby Warford from the Electronic Services Department as the City of Titusville's Employee of the Month for 2023, and Ron Swank is going to come up and do the presentation for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am very, very pleased and honored to be here tonight to recognize this wonderful young man who is working in my division. He has just been a breath of fresh air, just his, just his entire outlook, his quality, his enthusiasm is just absolutely wonderful. Uh, sure, do you want me to read the presentation? Basically, Bobby is a new team member to Electronic Services and to the city. He just, January, he just finished his six-month probation. And, you know, thinking about giving somebody, you know, that just finished probation, an Employee of the Month, it just, it's hard to tell you. I gave some pictures of the city clerk, and you should have them there. This is just one quantifiable picture showing a difference in the quality of work he's done. And that device was what we inherited from an outside contractor. And during all this work, he never impacted the operations of the sewer plant that this was located at. And this is just one particular item. In the pictures, you notice that, uh, an example was the rewiring of this programmable logic controller. You'll, you'll notice in the pictures that it's an accumulation of wires that have been added and changes made during 20 years that this contractor is doing the work. We have since inherited it and we're getting things corrected. But Bobby was able to, with, was just able to go in and take care of this. And he did it in such a professional manner, such quality as you can see from the documentation. And, and like I said, this is just one quantifiable item that he has done in his limited time here. He has done many others. So I am extremely, extremely pleased to be here and to have him be our Employee of the Month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Show this to the camera somehow. Get me that on the camera, because picture speaks a thousand words. And that is, I didn't know what that was when I'm sitting at my place there.
Yes.
I really didn't.
That's a before and after.
Wow, yeah, you can tell a fantastic job. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, sir.
To be noticed so quickly, I can see why. That says an awful lot about you. Here, we'll pick that up in a second, but with that, let's do a picture. Get on the other side.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And maybe you can take a copy up quickly. I don't know if she took a card there.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Uh, this month, the Titusville Fire Department will be the spotlight, the department spotlight. And with that, Chief Hasolis, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you're gonna see in just a minute, it's been a very, very eventful year for us this past year. And with that, I would like to present you all with our spotlight video. Actually, just before I do that, though, a lot of work went into everything we accomplished throughout the year, but specific to the video. I do want to thank our media services, Kurt, Will, and Sean. And then I also do want to thank Carrie and Kyle, who are sitting over here too, who did the voice and the writing for the video, just in case I forget to do that when we're done with it. But I'll be here for any questions too, if you have anything after you watch the video.
Thank you.
In 2022, Titusville Fire Department underwent a metamorphosis to keep up with the continuous growth of our city. Part of this growth included the promotion of our new fire chief, John Hasolis. Moving into the future, the department will have a Support Services and Operations Division. Under this new organizational structure, we will streamline the workflow, allowing for increased efficiency and better service to the public.
In addition, our department has rebranded with a new logo, vision, mission, values, and strategic five-year plan. These changes were predicated on our community deserving nothing but the most elite prevention, education, and first response team.
Our team is made up of eighty-two total personnel, seventy-five sworn line personnel, and seven civilian employees. This year, we are also proud to celebrate several promotions and important employee milestones. Each individual has shown expert professionalism and longstanding devotion to duty. The Operations Division is made up of frontline personnel who respond to emergencies wherever they arise. Led by the newly appointed Deputy Chief Jeff Harris, the Operations Division is divided into three battalions, each under the direct supervision of a battalion chief. Each first responder is a certified emergency medical technician or paramedic. The battalions work twenty-four-hour shifts out of four fire stations located throughout the city, and each station is under the direct supervision of a lieutenant. As the city continues to grow, plans are already in place to add a fifth fire station. Station fourteen opens spring of 2024 at eleven hundred John Glenn Boulevard.
On a typical day, we utilize three fire engines, one ladder truck, one squad, one rescue, one command vehicle, and a marine rescue boat. This year, we responded to a total of ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-one calls. Of those, one hundred forty-four calls were fire calls, and over six thousand were medical emergencies. Our average response time was four minutes and thirty-eight seconds. To meet the demands of an increasing population, we were approved to put an additional squad into service at Station twelve. Part of our reorganization included the appointment of Deputy Chief Lucas Singer to oversee the Support Services Division. The division is comprised of administration, finance, fire prevention, and public outreach.
In an effort to provide quality control and division of work, Greg Sutton moved into the newly created administrative battalion chief position. This position supervises training, recruitment, retention, and equipment for our department.
Under the supervision of Captain Matt Johnson, eight qualified personnel are responsible for planning, designing, and executing all department training activities. This year, our crews have logged over twenty thousand hours of training.
The fire service in Florida is facing a serious employee shortfall. For the first time in our history, we have created a recruitment team made up of members of various ranks. Their mission is to visit and attend local events, job fairs, high schools, and colleges to inform and educate others on what Titusville Fire has to offer. As a result of their efforts, we have hired nine new employees and, for the first time, are sponsoring a student through the Fire Academy.
This year, Captain Frank Canada continues the task of managing all logistical support for the fire department. He has also taken on the additional responsibility of coordinating fleet and facility up.
For fiscal year 2022, our budget totaled seven point four million dollars. Over six million was dedicated to personnel and approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand to operations.
Fire Marshal Paul Anderson and our prevention team continue to work with developers and contractors, conduct annual inspections, administer the smoke alarm program, and issue permits. The Prevention Division completed a total of over fourteen hundred inspections, seven hundred plan reviews, and nine fire investigations. The responsibility for overseeing emergency management falls under the leadership of the fire department. This year, we conducted a mock natural disaster training, which proved to be useful for our Hurricane Ian and Hurricane Nicole activations. New to our emergency management component, Fire Inspector Kyle Mack has taken on an additional role as the city's EM coordinator.
Our public education outreach was back to normal this year with in-person engine displays, station tours, and safety presentations. Throughout 2022, we had the pleasure to partner with local businesses, organizations, and agencies, teaching fire prevention and life safety methods in the community. Overall, we participated in a hundred and ninety-five events, reaching over six thousand people. This included fitting a hundred and seventy bicycle helmets, training twelve people in hands-only CPR, inspecting over fifty car seats, and providing forty-three child passenger seats through our reduced cost program.
Twenty twenty-two was a busy year as we made major strides in improving our operations. We were able to complete a five-year master plan that included a restructured organizational chart, new department logo, recruitment video, and challenge coin. We were approved to purchase a new tower truck and ambulance. We also implemented ESO software for record retention, purchased a Stryker auto stretcher and a Lucas automated CPR device. Finally, we were awarded a safer grant totaling one point four million dollars. This grant has enabled us to hire nine new firefighters, allowing us to staff our new Station fourteen.
The service we provide is made possible by our city leadership, elected officials, our fire department family, and support from our citizens. We'd like to commend the hard work and vested interest of these motivated individuals who together share a common vision. As chief of the Titusville Fire Department and on behalf of this great organization, we would like to say thank you.
I don't know if there's a follow-up from you on this or not, but we certainly want to have you up there. If not, I will say with a great presentation. I was honored to do lunch with the new firefighters, I don't know, two weeks ago. Quality group of people, and passion, and excitement to be here, and that's what I want to see. And again, all the things that I saw up there remind me of all the things that you do. It's not just the calls. It's an awful lot of public service, and I love the one, one time, we were at the thing out there at the Avenue, no, not the Avenue, Titus Landing. And you guys had that little fire thing going on, and I was walking the wrong way at the wrong time. Some of you may have seen that. And so I got doused, but it was...
That wasn't on purpose.
I think you were there.
Yeah.
But anyway, I appreciate what you guys do. I don't think we can put into words how much you're appreciated. Just honored to have you as our fire chief and all of you guys over there doing what you do every single day. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it's the epic fear. We're gonna start casting you guys as movie stars. You do such a wonderful job on your production, along with the city staff and everything. Man, we need to start charging and making money off of you guys as we, very well done, very, very well done.
Thank you very much. And I can add real quick, not to keep this going, but having been at Titusville High School for thirty-five years and the last ten is a facility AP, which was the direct connection to the fire department, you guys were at our place a lot. Anytime a kid has a seizure, and kids have seizures a lot more than I ever knew, and you guys are probably very aware of that. You guys are always the first ones there, the first ones to deal with it. I won't even get into words of other concerns that we have because people might think to do certain stupid things, but you know what I'm talking about, those kind of lockdown kind of things. You guys are the first ones there, along with TPD. And again, I don't think people realize how, you know, athletic events, you know, something goes bad, somebody's on the field, a lot of times you're already there, you know, just kind of there as support. And then, of course, sometimes you get called off, but you're always back quickly, and we appreciate that. And it was my honor to get to see you guys and work with you in so many different ways and so many different issues. Thank you for that. Member Cole.
Yeah, you know, I had an opportunity to come out and watch you guys in action on that fire on Leon, and I was, you know, I was brand new and I was totally impressed. And because of those good words, when you do the calendar, can I be on it?
Absolutely.
No, thank you guys for all that you do. We really appreciate it.
And you'd like to add, Chief, or you go?
I just want to say thank you. What we do as a fire department takes a whole city, and city staff, you all, and obviously our community too. So it's definitely a team effort, and I want to say thank you to you all and anyone listening and anyone here today, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And do know that you're appreciated. Thank you, you're appreciated, and everybody's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. City Manager.
Urban Tree Canopy Assessment. The City of Titusville Community Development Department received a grant funding from the USDA Forest Service through the Florida Forest Service to conduct a tree canopy assessment. The city's consultant performed the assessment, and staff will provide a presentation on that report. And Rachel Mueller...
Thank you.
Is here to do the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is always very intimidating to follow up the fire department. I just want to start by saying that. So the city recently completed an urban tree canopy assessment. This was done through grant funding by the US Forest Service through the Florida Forest Service. And the city had hired Planet Geo through a low bid process to conduct that assessment for us. So Planet Geo is a consulting firm that specializes in urban forest reservices. So they've done tree canopy assessments throughout the nation, and I'm just gonna walk you through the process of how the tree canopy assessment was done and the results that it showed us. So the first slide we're looking at here is the methodology for determining land cover. And land cover can be broken down into six classifications, and the most important one is the tree canopy classification. So when we think of tree canopy, we think of like the oak trees in our residential neighborhood, or the elm tree or sycamore tree in our favorite park, and the shade and ecosystem benefits that it provides to us by hanging over our head. So other land cover classifications that we use in this report are scrub and shrub habitat, impervious surface, surface water, soil and dry vegetation, and then a kind of mixed category called other vegetation. And so by using those land cover classifications, we are able to, to map the city boundaries and determine what all the different categories are throughout the city. And we could break this down even further and show you that there is thirty-five percent tree canopy within the city, twenty percent other, or twenty percent other vegetation. We have six percent shrub and scrub, twenty percent impervious, and then three percent soil and dry vegetation. The city also has sixteen percent water body surfaces throughout the city. So that is the general breakdown of the city land covers. And then so from there, we want to determine, now that we know what the city consists of, all the different land that it consists of, what do we do with this information? Where do we go with it from here? So that's where we start to figure out what the potential is for our urban tree canopy, where it can grow, and how we can protect it in the future. So when we look at the urban tree canopy potential, the main thing we're looking at here is the possible planting areas. So a possible planting area is, area that's currently not tree canopy cover that could become in the future tree canopy cover. And so when we're looking at this, we want to exclude certain things with, throughout the city. So obviously, impervious surface, that gets thrown out, but then other things, when we're looking at, like for example, in this slide, when we're looking at our local parks, we don't want to put a tree in the middle of a baseball field. We don't want to put a tree in the middle of a football field or a soccer field. So those kinds of things get excluded out of the potential planting areas. So the potential planting areas included mostly other vegetation and then the shrub layer. So this is a map of the urban tree canopy potential. So this is broken down by urban tree canopy cover, and so the PPA, that stands for Potential Planting Area, that is the light green, and then we have some unsuitable layers. And so this is the breakdown of what our urban tree canopy potential looks like. And you might notice that it now says that urban tree canopy is at forty-two percent, when I originally had said that the urban tree canopy in the city is thirty-five percent. So I want to call that out and why that number has changed. When we're looking at our urban tree canopy potential, we're excluding water bodies. So as I mentioned at the beginning, sixteen percent of the city of Titusville is considered to be water bodies. So that includes the lagoons and our lakes and stormwater ponds. So those are all included within the water bodies. So when we exclude water bodies because theoretically we can't plant in water, so when we exclude the water bodies, our urban tree canopy percentage is actually forty-two percent. Seven percent of the, of the city, and now we have thirty-one percent impervious surface as well. So when we look at that forty-two percent of tree canopy cover, we kind of want to look to see where, where are trees being planted? So most of the city's tree canopy is in vegetated areas. So it's, it's overhanging pervious surfaces. So that's like our, our lawns, the parks, and in the right of ways, but not necessarily next to the road. And only three percent is overhanging impervious surfaces. This is an important distinction to make because one of the reasons that our urban tree canopy is so important is to mitigate something we like to call urban heat island effect. An urban heat island effect happens when we have a lot of impervious surface and not enough shade covering that. Imagine, or you, we all know what it's like to stand in the middle of a parking lot in the August sun, and you just instantly start sweating, and you're like, it doesn't feel this hot when I walk out of my door. Why is it so hot right now? That is urban heat island effect. So when there's a lot of impervious surface and not enough shade, we get more intense heat. So those numbers are kind of important to show where our canopy currently is and where it isn't. So from there, we wanted to look at how the tree canopy breaks down by certain geographical boundaries. So we looked at the city limits, which we've been showing you already. Then we also did study area zones. The study area zones were created by our department, kind of based on the roads and like the natural, kind of natural neighborhoods within the city, just to give us a smaller breakdown other than the city limit. We also looked at stormwater basins and then the census block groups. So when we look at these study area zones that are mainly broken down by major roads, we can see that seventy-four percent of tree canopy is in Zone twenty-three, which is at the, the very south of the city. And in fact, when we just look at this map, we can see that areas where higher tree canopy coverage exists, that's going to be the darker shades of green, are more in the south end of the city and in the east end of the city. And when we look at the west end, where it's closer to the lagoon, we start to have more impervious surface and less tree canopy coverage. So, and then we could also break it down by which areas have the highest possible planting areas, and I won't go too much into that. It's all in the report, which is included in your agenda packet, and if you had any questions about it, I'll take them afterwards. So then we could also look at it by stormwater basins. And so when we look at the urban tree canopy at a basin level, we could see that, again, mostly, a lot of our tree canopy exists mostly to the east of the city. West.
West? I'm thinking, wait a minute, that's a river out there.
That's right. Sorry, my bad. I apparently don't have an internal compass. Thank you. Um, I'll keep going. And so then if we look, no, you're gonna need that. We look at the census block groups, again, to the south of the city is where we have most of our tree canopy coverage, and then to the east, west, east of the city is where we can do some work to improve our tree canopy coverage. And most of our census block groups have at least twenty to thirty percent potential planting areas within them. And so then from there, now that we've kind of assessed the urban tree canopy, the potential planting area is based on the different geographies within the city, we could start to calculate what those benefits of the tree canopy are to the city. So this is done using iTree, which is a federal software that is provided pretty much for any general use. And what we see here is that we have over five million dollars of annual benefits from air quality protection, from stormwater reduction, from carbon sequestration. So basically, you know, as we all know, we learn in our science classes that trees collect carbon and they produce oxygen for us, and those benefits can all be added up, and that's where we get the five million dollars from. And then we can also look at carbon storage. So the trees, they hold carbon in, and so that annual carbon can, gets added up based on the tree's lifespan, and so each year that the tree grows and is alive and is in good health, it can add more and more carbon that it can hold. So the overall carbon storage is about forty-seven million dollars of benefits. So a healthier tree canopy is more, means more benefits to the city. So then from there, the Planet Geo... So then from there, the Planet Geo provided us with some planting prioritizations. So this is to help us guide potential future planting efforts. And this was done off of six different classifications. So they looked at us, looked at stormwater reduction, human health, wildlife habitat connectivity, underserved populations, the urban heat island, and right of ways. So they standardized each one of these and gave them equal weights to provide us a planting prioritization. But city staff can always go back and maybe change the weights of each of them based on what we would like to see. So for example, we could look at just underserved populations, something we like to call environmental justice and tree equity. Usually, there are less trees in underserved, minority, low-income neighborhoods. And so we might want to prioritize planting trees in those areas. So we can look specifically just at the underserved populations. Or we could look at the wildlife habitat connectivity. Say there is an endangered species that all of a sudden emerges, and we know that we could, you know, provide habitat for it here. We could look specifically just at wildlife habitat connectivity. So that's something city staff now has the ability to do, thanks to this report. But in terms of what was provided to you in the agenda packet, those are all static maps. So it just shows you with each of those having equal weight. So this is what it looks like with all six of those prioritizations equally weighted out. So some of the highest planting priorities exist along the lagoon and the northern end of of the city. So the key findings of the report is that there is 42% canopy coverage citywide. 58% of the citywide plantable space is located within the St. John's Basin, which, but it's a pretty large basin, so that makes sense. And then there's 5.2 million annual ecosystem benefits. So they provided, Planet Geo provided the city with some recommendations on what we can do with this report. This includes leverage the results of the assessment to promote the urban forest and set canopy goals. The community development staff has been taking this project very seriously and urban forestry in general. And we've, we've talked with experts in the field, and they've told us that in terms of setting canopy goal, this is something that should be community-driven. There is no, there's no set recommendation provided that says cities should have a certain percentage of tree canopy. There used to be a recommendation that says we should aim for about 40% tree canopy within a city. But the U.S. Forest Service no longer goes by that recommendation. And they now say that it should be dependent on the community and what the community needs are. So that's one of the recommendations. The second recommendation is to use the urban tree canopy data to identify areas to prioritize canopy expansion. So like I mentioned, that could be within those potential planting areas that were listed in the report. And then develop outreach programs towards private landowners. Titusville is a, has a lot of residential areas within it. And so, you know, there's opportunities to to do some programming that promotes having residents plant trees in their yard. That helps, that helps private benefits, and then it also has community-wide benefits by doing some residential planting programs. And then the fourth one is to use TreePlatter to identify areas in need of tree canopy, prioritize planting efforts, and continue to monitor the urban forest. TreePlatter is a software that is provided by Planet Geo that the city could potentially subscribe to in the future. So those were the recommendations that were, had been provided to the city. And, you know, in community development, we're just very happy to see that this report was done and the results. And we really look forward to leveraging these results in the future with our future works.
First of all, excellent, excellent presentation. I think you could do a whole day seminar on this. There's a lot to it. I agree. That's awesome. So what would the next step from community development be on this? What's the next thing on your ladder of how to do what we do?
I think that's a great question. So this, we were able to do this report through a matching grant from the Florida Forest Service. And so they provide grants on an annual basis. And so I see our next step being to apply for another grant. Next time, hopefully, we can do a street tree inventory, hopefully. That's, that's the approach that is advised by the Florida Forest Service. Because I had asked them in the past, like, what should we do next? And that's what they said. Hopefully, in the near future, we could even do an urban forestry management plan once we collect all of this data. And then from there, we would want to start scheduling plantings.
Good. Vice Mayor.
Very good. And what did you call the absence of trees and the sidewalk?
The urban heat island effect.
Who?
The urban heat island effect.
Well, that. I grew up with that in Texas, and that's why I don't go to Texas in the summertime, in the month of August. You know, you burn your tennis shoes on. And and this was great. It was great. I hope that with, as the mayor said, I hope we continue with it. I, I live in a neighborhood that's got a lot of trees, and I walk in the middle of the day. And about every, you know, 100 yards, I'm under a tree. And it's so pleasant, even though it's at, you know, 12 o'clock noon and the sun is shining. Trees are so very important. And thank you for doing it. I truly support that you apply for any dollars and and start, you know, planting some more trees. I kind of like them. It makes summer a much better time of the year. Thank you.
They're beautiful year round. Member Stokel.
Yep. No, thank you. And I kind of wanted to echo what the mayor was saying, because one of your recommendations was setting those goals. I don't know what that would actually look like, I guess. And I don't know if we're there yet, or there's still more research to be had to figure that out, because I think it's important to all of us. But I just, I don't know what that looks like, I guess.
Yes, so it's, it's something, like I said, that we've been advised should be community-driven. So it might be, this report, actually, I should have mentioned it before, but it's going to come before you at the, hopefully, the next city council meeting, up for adoption. And so hopefully, you know, it does get adopted. And from there, we could start doing some more public education and outreach on what the report has said and start strategizing ways to engage the community, to get some community feedback on how the community values trees and start getting some estimates on what the tree canopy percentage could be. And then come back to you all with maybe a few different scenarios and, you know, kind of put it in your hands.
Yeah, because that was my thinking, is like, could we potentially see that percentage get lowered if we aren't taking action?
Right.
And that's where I don't want to be caught in that, and I'm like, oh, no, we could have done so. Anything like that would be beneficial, I think, for me to see and the rest of us, to see what we can do. So, thank you.
Member Cole.
Yes, as a part of the grant that you receive, if individual citizens wanted saplings or small trees to plant, is, are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, there, there is a category called plantings. So you could, we could get grant fund, funding for plantings. I'm not sure, though, if we could give them to residents. I think they might have to be planted in public areas. But the past two years, actually, the city has received money from the Florida Forest Service, not through a grant, just by asking to do Arbor Day plantings. So in 2021 and 2022, the Florida Forest Service provided the city with $200 to purchase trees to give away. And so in the last two years, we've given 100 trees away with that money.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Member Nelson.
And if I remember right, we're going to start the boxes, the stormwater boxes downtown?
Yeah, I believe that project is currently in the works. I'm not sure where it is, though.
So that'll provide some shade for the downtown streets where we have the impervious pavement. So that'll be great.
Very good. Anything else from council? Anything from you guys? Very well done. Very well done. It's very promising. I look forward to seeing the steps on the ladder as we go up. Thank you so very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Petitions and requests from the public.
Okay. Stan Johnston, professional engineer, licensed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public, ignored by the city. I want you to understand, when I wear this shirt, when I'm wearing this shirt, I'm using restraint. I believe I prepared this shirt maybe a year ago or so. First time I wore it was this past Sunday, I wore it to church. So now I'm wearing it to council meeting. What does it say? I don't know if you, I don't think Mr. Reese can see it, but it says, Fire City Manager. And what I've asked you to do is fire city manager without pension because of his outrageous nonsense, outrageous dishonesty, and outrageous violation of laws. It's unbelievable. Unbelievable. Unbelievable what you can believe and what the public can believe. For example, Jolynn Nelson says that we stopped spraying people with sewage in the, in the parks because she was told that FDPE said it's okay. Now, this is not out, this is not just nonsense. It's just complete outrageous nonsense from a council member. How can anybody responsible, and I'm talking about the public too, the public supporting this nonsense and not even opposing it? It's your fault, too. It's your fault that the city is in this situation of complete, it's not, the city's not bad. It's horrible what's going on. Just horrible. Like, for example, this week, I, I, I asked the council members to return my calls. They didn't return calls. No, sir. They don't return calls. They don't respond to emails. In fact, is, is that I've, I've given you an idea that, well, I've told you that what's happening is that the city of Titusville is committing a felony by false reports from city manager and your guys' approval. You guys are proving it. Now, this is not a time to watch your, watch your phone, Ms. Dr. Stokel. Dr. Stokel, I want you to understand is that, is that if you go to court, we're going to, we're going to ask you about this fraud that was committed in 2019. This fraud that is in ORB, ORB and pages that are just sent to Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Same goes for Mrs. Nelson. That's going to go. That, that's, when we go to court, if we go to court, by golly, we're going to bring you on up about your, the honesty of the city, city cap, not just city manager, who you should fire. This is big time. So I'm asking you to even think about closed doors. Now, the last correspondence I gave you about closed doors saying is that closed doors are a code of silence to conceal dishonesty and evil by the city. That's what you guys are doing. Closed doors by you and the city manager, you don't respond, you don't respond to public meetings. You will have no response to what I say right tonight. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on all of you. And shame on, on, on the public, too, for not going in and getting involved in this, in this outrageous dishonesty. Okay, I ask for another minute.
I see none.
Thank you.
Next up, Ms. St. Anne. Or Ms. Kay, as I say.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. Florida's urban forest provides countless dollars annually in social, economic, and environmental benefits to communities and enhances our quality of life. The purpose of an urban tree canopy assessment is to provide the data needed to set a city tree canopy goal. The urban tree canopy assessment presented to you provided a measure of Titusville's tree canopy coverage as of 2021 as a percentage of the total tree, total land area. But rapid development is rapidly reducing the tree canopy coverage. Our community is keen on preserving tree canopy coverage. The concept plan for an urban forestry program recommended to council by TEC on January 11 establishes a tree canopy goal for Titusville and calls on council to adopt the resolution committing to this canopy goal. The American Forest website recommends a tree canopy percentage of 48% for Titusville. The, the concept plan meets the city's land development regulations for the TEC to develop and administer a plan for the care, preservation, and planting of trees in parks, along streets, and other public areas. In addition, the concept plan meets the requirement of TreeCityUSA for a community forestry program. We have not had a community forestry program up to this time. But now TEC has recommended one, and their land development regulations require them to adopt one. The plan calls for the strategic planting of trees to address various issues, including stormwater reduction and temperature reduction to reduce citizens' vulnerability to extreme heat events. So staff is advised that they plan to schedule council's consideration for adoption of both the tree canopy and assess, tree canopy assessment and the concept plan for an urban forestry program at the March 14 council meeting. The urban tree canopy assessment reviewed tonight provided a baseline for setting a tree canopy goal. The concept plan asks the city to set a tree canopy goal, and it prioritizes tree planting locations to expand the city's canopy coverage as part of an urban forestry program and facilitates policy decisions to optimize the benefits of our city's urban forest. Once again, I want to say our community is keen on preserving tree canopy. So let's not stop now. Thank you, council, for reviewing this tree canopy assessment.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Hello, sir. How are you?
Hello. Michael Majak, Alpine Lane, and the vice chair of the Environmental Commission, whose report, I noticed, was not presented with today's report. And that was a great report, Rachel, let me tell you. That was a lot better than the one that we had at the TEC meeting, whose notes you still don't have and whose recording we don't have. So I'm here to quickly ask you, please video and record the TEC meetings like everybody else so that people can participate. To, to wit, this particular survey. The TEC had identified, as I recall, six different bulleted points that we felt were inadequately addressed by this particular assessment. One, the 42% tree canopy, for example. It included lands of the west that are already wetland trees, and it included that 1,200 acres to the south that we've already agreed to build on. I forget the name of the development, but there were some 1,200 homes going in there. So that 1,200 acres is gone. We've lost several thousand acres in the last couple of years. And the point is that the assessment used data that was two years old. So if you're looking at two-year-old data, then perhaps that may be what we had. But with our current building mode, we're not there now. So one of the things that we need is to do assessments more frequently, possibly using our own drones in spot checking areas so that we can keep up with these intermediate or every-two-year assessments. Like Kay said, the forested, the American Forest website recommended that this area go for 48%. So with the urban heat island effect being the most priority thing that we address, we should also be looking at the wetland possibilities, the forested wetland potentials. We're not incorporated into this assessment. And you can plant in wetlands when you plant mangroves. We've got to start planting mangroves along our waterways, please. So there are things that we can do that this particular assessment didn't incorporate. And I hope you get the TEC report before the next meeting.
Hold up. And this is just kind of me and you. I was over at Space Coast High School recently for a wrestling event, actually. And I was thinking about our, our golf cart. We did a tour of the trees over there. And it made me think that I, we need to do another ride that we did around town. Kind of show me a few more things, some of the things you're talking about. I think that would be fun. I enjoyed that last time, but just got to make sure the air conditioner's on real high.
Be happy to, Mayor.
So, well, next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
I brought it.
All right.
Thank you. Next up. No, you're good. You're good.
Thank you. Bill Klein, Indian River Avenue in Titusville. I'm very glad to see you all are looking at trees and the tree canopy in different areas. One little suggestion that I have about an area that really should have some trees planted is like the Max Brewer Causeway. When I look at old diagrams of the Causeway, we've lost about 80... When I look at old diagrams of the causeway, we've lost about 80 to 100 foot of width of the causeway from erosion, because there was nothing planted there. It was just sand. Right now, one section of the causeway, it's washed out almost 15 feet from the road's edge. This would be an excellent area to use mangroves in the water. Red mangroves are excellent for that. You can have sable palms along the shoreline, because they spread their roots all over. I have pictures taken after Hurricane Irma behind our condo, where the top soil washed away, and you can see all the roots of the sable palms. And that prevented the land from being washed out from under our air conditioners there. So what I'm thinking is, when you all are looking for spaces to plant trees, a great area would be to protect our causeway and plant the trees there, including mangroves and sable palms. That's my suggestion, and thank you.
How are our mangroves doing out there? That we planted over there by the Sandpoint Park? I was wondering about those.
Some of them are growing. One of the things is red mangroves do best when they're planted in the water instead of onshore.
Okay, yeah, we were onshore.
And if it's too deep, you run into problems. Now, along the shoreline, once you're on land, the black and the white mangroves are very good. Usually, it's, I think what you have is the red in the water, then the black, then the white, and then buttonwood further up the slope. But when you do a real mangrove study, someone who has a lot of knowledge in mangroves would be good to use to determine what areas to plant them and how to plant them.
All right. Well, now you've got me red ones and white ones and blue ones. I don't know. I'm going to need help. But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up. Are you going to go down?
Do you want to have a light on?
Yeah.
Go ahead. In the meantime, can we set her up over at this microphone over there? Well, you're going to be, you're not going to see you. Can you stand up?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Never mind that.
Well, let me ask Bill a question real quick. Bill, are you talking about the east side of the bridge or the west side of the bridge? Because I don't think we have any authority to work on the west side of the bridge.
I'm talking both sides of the bridge, whatever. Sometimes if you don't have authority, you can ask the person who has authority.
Yeah.
I think asking is a very good thing.
I wouldn't even ask you, because as far as I'm concerned, we just plant. I mean, we went out over there to Chain of Lakes, and we had a bunch, and we went over to the Sandpoint, both times you were there, and just plant.
Right.
Just plant.
Yeah, just dig in and plant.
Just plant.
Well, let me just say that jurisdiction-wise, we have.
I'm not saying you can do anything wrong, I'm just saying, plant.
Okay.
Properly plant.
Sure. Properly plant. Because I think knowing where you want them and stuff, then you find out who's allowed to do it, and then do it.
Well, it seems to me you guys must have gotten permission at Chain of Lakes, and that's county. You know, that's not us.
Yes.
So that we, a bunch of them went down. So, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, I thought you were going to be behind the podium and we wouldn't see you, so. There we go. There, there you go.
See me now, huh?
Yeah, you can see me now.
Laurlee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue. And first of all, I want to thank Rachel for getting that grant. It was awesome.
That was awesome.
Yeah, really, really good. And, and I wish her luck going after the next one, and I know she'll get it, because she's a bulldog. I, I'm the chair of your Environmental Commission, and when they had the presentation on January the 11th, the TEC unanimously approved the urban tree canopy assessment, but they wanted to add some recommendations. So I'm up here to tell you what those recommendations are, and hopefully you'll approve the recommendations and have them added to the tree assessment before it comes before you in March 14th, so we can get it all approved together. Number one was priority for shading walkways and roadways. Number two, and this was covered by Michael, more frequent mapping to allow monitor, monitoring if there's rapid development. Well, we know there's rapid development going on right now, and we're already looking at a study that's two years old, and we're already, you know, clear-cutting thousands of acres since that study was done. So we definitely want to do more frequent mapping. You want to do tree surveys and soil surveys. You need to be able to tell people what kind of soil they have, so they plant the right tree in the right dirt. Ground truthing, that could be done with volunteers. We could do that ourselves, measuring trees and, and keeping track of that. Stormwater uptake data needs to be included in planting and canopy restoration, and we need to consider sea level rise and elevation when we're planting trees. These trees are going to outlast us, but, but so is sea level rise. So we don't want to be planting oak trees in, in an area where it's going to be covered with salt water in 20 years. And I, I want to point out that the forested wetlands on the west side of the city, between the west side of the city and I-95, they were one of the largest areas of canopy that showed up on, on some of Rachel's slides. So in addition to, you know, being able to use those areas potentially for stormwater storage, they're a big part of our tree canopy. It's really, really important that we start trying to figure out how to save those forested wetlands. So good luck. Hopefully you'll approve our, our six additional recommendations, and I look forward to seeing both the assessment and the concept plan approved at your March 14th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Take your time. I can't see you now. There you go. There you go.
Hello.
Hey, how are you?
Good, good. Tom Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue. It occurs to me, you may not be aware, that the Titusville Garden Club Tree Farm has been growing mangroves for a few years now, and we've been providing them to the MRC way down south. More recently, we've decided to try to see if we can do our own nursery, since we've been actually grown several hundred of these. And we've actually applied for a grant, matching grant, to hopefully get this started and keep some of these mangroves up here for our own use, and use them in a similar way to what the MRC is doing, but at least having them in our community. On a different topic, as a member of this community, as a member of the TEC, I recognize the need for our Titusville Environmental Commission meetings to be video-recorded, like our other meetings. Our citizens are interested in the activities of the TEC, and the TEC wishes to further reach out and engage those interested in improving our community. What better way of making the meetings available in video to those who cannot always physically attend? Our tree team is a great example of one group of engaged citizens that, over the last few years, has been incredibly helpful to us. We would like to reach out through our activities in the TEC to others who have an interest in the Titusville Environmental Commission's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Tom. Next up. Absolutely. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening. Kristen Lorti, Cocoa resident and member of the Titusville Tree Team. Just a few comments that I'd like to make about this. One is that I strongly support Kay's comment, and Laurlee and Michael who spoke in support, and Tom just now. Strong support of those. I support the canopy assessment itself, the numbers were given that were asked for. There is strong community support. And Titusville is really lucky to have Kay St. Orange and the organizational ability there making these recommendations to you guys, so I hope that they're taken seriously, including the concept plan. I was able to attend the January meeting, where they did discuss the recommendations and the report, and I do hope that those recommendations are presented with the report at the next meeting, and that they're bundled together with the report, so that we don't end up getting them lost. There was a lot of discussion that went into those recommendations, so I hope that they're captured together. And speaking of the meeting, on February, I really wanted to attend the February meeting, and I'm a Cocoa resident. I was unable to attend in person. I was greatly disappointed to not be able to participate and to not be able to livestream. Titusville has a lot of excellent meetings. I watch your meetings. I wanted to participate via the livestream. I was unable to. I have to drive. For me, it's about 20 miles that I live away, so I'm taking up a gallon of gas to come to the meetings, and wouldn't it be more environmentally conscious for me to watch those meetings at home? I was very enthusiastic about Titusville unanimously supporting the TEC meetings being recorded. I do hope that city staff comes back and also supports that. So it's just a huge help. It goes beyond Titusville. Right now, I've spoken before about Cocoa. Cocoa is currently having a struggle in sustainability, and I've spoke, spoken before at meetings. You guys are, are offering some leadership to the rest of the county, and I'd like you to know that these decisions go beyond Titusville. Let's not have everybody coming to the meetings. Let's make them available via video recording. I know the room's getting, getting full, but I appreciate you taking my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next up for our petitions and requests from the public, we're still meeting one for the people that are coming in and might be confused. We are still in the first meeting. It'll be over shortly, I think.
Tony Shifalo, the Historic Norwood House, which is located in a negative tree equity area. So of course, I'm here as a cheerleader for the tree equity part of the Urban Tree Forest Program, and a cheerleader for your advisory boards. The Environmental Commission would be very capable and able, Dr. Stokel, to help set some of the goals that you're looking for with citizen input. They work very closely with the tree team as citizens who are continually doing research and inputting for their benefit. And I just wanted to say in closing, that just as Dr. Jacoby kind of left the impression that because Titusville only has 30 or 40 septic tanks, that we don't really have a problem polluting the Indian River Lagoon, that having this tree assessment, say, two years ago, that we had 42% coverage, look at all the clear-cutting that has been done in the last two years, in the last six months, and rethink 42%. Thank you very much for accepting this, and I do hope that you will accept the Environmental Commission's six-point suggestions that they're, and recommendations that they're coming across with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this one? All right. 25 till or 20 till? Five minutes. All right, but let's, let's, 20? All right, then we'll, let's, I don't know, we're trying to decide when to start the next one. All right, 6:40, we'll start second meeting. This meeting is adjourned.